On our regular city council meeting of Monday, February 8, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order. And 2920, members of the city council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch via live stream. And also through public participation by giving written comments by 4:00 PM on the meeting day and also registers to speak at Zoom. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation.
One nation. Indivisible.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call please?
Yes, thank you for waiting for me. Mr. Buenaventura.
Present.
Ms. G. D. Giovanni.
Present.
Dr. Rod.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present. Thank you. We are now moving on to presentations. This February, we are proclaiming February 2021 as Black History Month. And today, instead of one recipient, we'll have three individuals receive the proclamation this evening. So with that, we'll read the proclamation. All right. So for Black History Month 2021, whereas February is officially celebrated as Black History Month to honor the achievements of African Americans in general, as well as their ongoing role in the development of the United States and their contributions to the city of Daly City in particular. And whereas in 1926, historian and Dr. Carter G. Woodson, who is known as the father of Black history studies, introduced Negro History Week to resist racism and to highlight the role blacks have played in the development of civilization. And whereas in 1992, the city of Daly City began honoring African Americans by observing Juneteenth, the oldest known celebration commemorating the ending of slavery in the United States. And over time, the Juneteenth commemoration grew into a celebration of Black History Month. And whereas African Americans residing in Daly City have contributed to the betterment of our community through their skills, their volunteerism, their strength and vitality, their civic pride and their business ventures. And whereas this year, 2021, the 29th consecutive year of commemorating Black history in Daly City, the Daly City Library and Recreation Services in conjunction with the African American Community Initiative of San Mateo County's Office of Diversity and Equity, will host a celebration featuring culture arts, performances, an interactive wellness break, a soul food cooking demonstration, African American trivia, a community shout-outs, a door prize, drawings, and more planned to foster community. And whereas the 2021 event theme is called the Black Family: Representation, Identity and Diversity, was special guests focusing on celebrating the Black family through spoken word, the impact of COVID-19 on the health and wellness of the Black family, and the LGBT queer Black family representation. And whereas the community is invited to this free virtual event to be held by from 10:30 AM to 12:30 on Saturday, February 2021, and is encouraged to sign up. We'll have that link for you. You'll see it on our website. And now therefore I, Justin Manalo, Mayor, and the members of the city council do hereby proclaim February 2021 as Black History Month in Daly City. And to accept this, we have our honorees. I'd like to now hand over, we have Keith Richardson's, Keith's Chicken and Waffles. He is here. And is he on the line?
Yes, I am. How's everybody?
So to give some information on Keith's Chicken and Waffles, if many of you don't know, it's right there across on San Pedro. And is one of our Black owned businesses here in Daly City. He's been, he's given back to our community through many events. And really, on the bend, he has good news as well. He's expanding his businesses. And it's so wonderful to see that your business is thriving and expanding. And so we wanted to be able to honor you this evening. And thank you for what you've been able to do for our community. And for our community members out there, please support Keith's Chicken and Waffles. So I yield the floor to you, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everyone for supporting us throughout the four plus years we've been on San Pedro Road. And it's only because of the community that we're striving through this pandemic. We're really humble and of everybody that comes in and supports us. And we're excited and we employ a lot of people that's lives in the Daly City area, which is great. So we just ask that people continue to support, spread the word, and we could keep on keeping the community evolving and and just keep people working and safe. So really appreciate it. And Daly City is a great place to do business with. Everybody's always been so welcoming and helpful. And I really appreciate it. I can't do without the community. Thank you, Pamela.
Thank you so much, Mr. Richardson. So I'll read a little bit on your website as far as like your chicken and waffles. Because I see that you've done extensive research. So the chicken and waffle hype really began when LA rapper Snoop Dogg brought it to the mainstream when he made references in his songs to the world famous Roscoe's Chicken and Waffles in Los Angeles. The chicken and waffle concept actually started in the early 1900s in Harlem, New York. Keith was fascinated with the combination, so he decided to start his own venture. Before embarking on this journey, he conducted extensive research in the search for the best chicken and waffle joints in America. So he's traveled as far as Florida in search of the best chicken and waffles in order to gain the knowledge and experience to be considered one of the greats. As a true foodie at heart, he spent several years perfecting his chicken seasoning recipe. Every item on the menu has gone through very careful process in order to meet the demands of our customers. And we definitely taste that. So everyone out there, continue to support. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now we have And now we have Kalima Saluhundin. And let me give you a brief bio on Kalima. Many in our community know her, and she is our currently serving her third term on the Jefferson Union High School Board, District Board of Education. She also is a past president of the San Mateo County Board Association on the COVID nineteen Recovery Council and the County Vaccination Equity Committee. She was one of the founding members of the Reach Coalition, a group of elected officials of color to increase equity and community. She also serves on the Board of the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo and also is a board member of Habitat for Humanity. Currently, she is employed Excelis and a coordinator on the Investor Relations Public Affairs Team. And her most important job is being mother to her three wonderful adult children.
Thank you for that. Also, just to Keith, I know Devin really well from working with him at Habitat for Humanity. And and I also have a few COVID pounds due to your restaurant. The chicken and waffles are legit. And you know, I'm really happy that you moved here because I would have to drive all the way to Oakland previously to get really good chicken and waffle. So congratulations. It's well deserved.
Thank you.
And to the entire council and to Madam Mayor Manalo, I'm just really grateful for this recognition. I always start this out by saying, you know, my history is not a month. It is three hundred and sixty five days a year. I'm happy for this acknowledgement right now. But I will continue to do the work to ensure that, you know, in San Mateo County, we're recognized in part of the North County as being part of San Mateo County. Sometimes they forget that there's other people on the other side of ninety two, that, you know, our issues need to be put to the forefront. And I know that sometimes because we're communities of color, we're overlooked. And that cannot be the case moving forward. So I'm happy to work with the entire city council on, especially right now through the COVID nineteen process to ensure that Daly City residents get the same level of service as everybody else. And so that we all get through this with the same level of impact on our communities. And it doesn't disproportionately affect us versus the rest of the county. And again, in my role in trying to see if we can get our schools open safely and, you know, what, how much and what can we do and advocate more so that our teachers, our staff, and most important, our students and their families can get back into our campuses and all be safe. So I'm very happy to be here with you tonight. And my commitment is to continue working moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Kalima. And last but not least, we have Jordan Hill, who is a senior at Jefferson High School. He is seventeen years old and the president of the Black Student Union at Jeff. We met Jordan when he led the Black Lives Matter, you know, protest, peaceful protest, walked towards City Hall and through his leadership, so many people come together. And really was inspiring to see him at the forefront and centered within the that protest and really inspiring that he brought along with him many young people during during that day.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to just thank the mayor for allowing me to be here tonight to speak to, you know, on the importance of Black History Month. And I just want to also thank you guys for, you know, being welcoming and, you know, me being a resident in Daly City, you know, just having it feel welcome and, you know, like, you know, just make it feel like a home, you know, somewhere that I can call a place like home. And for me, just speaking on Black History Month, it's just, you know, as the previous person I just spoke, you know, it's like not just a month, it's three hundred and sixty five days, you know, a year. And it just reminds me of, you know, everything that our ancestors went through to get us here as where we are today. You know, things that they went through and things like that. I'm just really grateful that I was able to, you know, just talking on the peaceful protest, you know, it took a lot of courage, you know. Sometimes it's like, you know, when you want to do something, people don't always have your support. People don't always think it's going to go right. But, you know, me being the individual that I am, you know, I just always want to see the good in things, you know, always pushing myself to do things that are going to inspire someone else. Like, you know, for instance, there's people that, when I go to school, I am the president of the B S U. You know, there's people that the, you know, the the movement to go forward. There's always people that are always like, well, I don't know. And, you know, me being the person that I am, I want to encourage people to always say, you know, there's always time to take a step out on faith. You never know where it's going to take you. And I just want to thank you guys for allowing me to have this opportunity. And I always want to thank the mayor also for reaching out to me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Jordan, for your words. And you are the next generation. And as as mentioned, it's really important to celebrate, not only today, but the whole year and the ongoing histories of the African American black communities. And so thank you all for highlighting that. It's an honor to have Black History Month continue in our city and to have amazing committee members that are committed. And we look forward to celebrating. And so it'll be virtually, but but please, everyone, sign up on the link. And maybe if there's a possibility, can someone please put in the chat on how they can register? And folks would be able to do so.
Mayor, we we don't have a chat function.
Well, please go on our website, dailycity.org, and we'll we'll have it there. Thank you so much. Now, at this point, I'd like to open up up to my colleagues if they have any comments they'd like to share. I definitely will open up the floor.
Mayor, I guess I'll start, if that's okay with you.
Councilmember D Giovanni, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Well, first of all, I have to echo the three hundred and sixty five days. So those that have known you, I know Keith go way back. And Kalima, I see the work. And you guys do it for everybody. I mean, just talk about equity. I mean, I've seen it in action. I saw Jordan where he, you guys bring it together. You guys are always inclusive. And that's where the black community needs to be treated as well. It needs to be reciprocated. So that and here in Jordan says he feels welcome. We have a lot of work to do together. But you definitely have have me on the table. You know, I've been there with, in the city, Keith, with the gun violence prevention and all the people there and Kalima as well. And Jordan, I don't know if you know the history, but we've always come together. And for me, that's that's where it needs to go. But we have a lot to do together and with you guys' leadership. And where it should be. And then a lot of people didn't even realize when I just got off a webinar earlier today that even in, you know, the Jewish community with the Sub-Saharan in the African area, there was lots of blacks slavery, right? So it's a study and through UCLA. So to dive deep and really recognize those roots and what occurrences and where come, but we need to move forward together. And and I love that the approach that the young man, Jordan, future, Kalima with your daughters, Keith with your family. I think there'd be maybe more collaboration together. And I want to recognize Leslie as well. It was her mother in Daly City that started this Black History Month who has passed on now and but continues the recognition of that. So looking forward to interacting. And you know, you have my love and support always. And we'll be there forever for and we'll fight with not and not, you know, in the nonviolent manner, but in as with a loving heart, you know that, right? So congratulations and three hundred and sixty five days a year. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, Councilmember D Giovanni.
Mayor, or Mayor, if I can share.
Please, Dr. Rod Dosmakbal, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
So I just want to begin with this quote by June Jordan. And she said that to tell the truth is to become beautiful, to begin to love yourself, values yourself. And that's political in its most profound way. So when I think of that quote, it reminds me of like black history, back, black history is American history. We and us as a community, us as a country, we can't move forward unless we understand the pain, the struggle, and the survival stories of the black experience. So I encourage everyone, like, Black History Month is not just a multicultural, like, piece of the pie. But it is a struggle. It is the story, it's a narrative of this country. And we can't, we can't get past what's going on today unless we understand the stories and the pain that has gone through in terms of, we always talk about structural racism and the generational trauma that has been experienced and gets reproduced generation after generation. So with Black History Month, it goes on to say about, you know, knowledge itself. And for me, as a person that grew up on on hip hop and hip hop is black music, it taught me, my experiences as a Filipino American, to understand what are the parallels of the black experience and the Filipino experience and the the different solidarities that we've seen through the Philippine American War to, you know, Third World Liberation from ethnic studies in San Francisco State to Filipinos for Black Lives and, you know, in terms of like the work that I do, my nonprofit and my classes at Skyline College is to really hone in and understand how race and racism gets played out and to analyze the systems of oppression that we live in. So I salute all of you. I want to say thank you to all of y'all to what y'all do. And anywhere I can support anything that you all do, you know, I have open door policy. So I just want to say thank you and I support everything that y'all do. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Dosmakbal. Councilmember Ray Vittaventura. You're on mute.
Thank you, Mayor, for inviting and honoring these distinguished people for this, what I think is a very important celebration and recognition. Let me start by talking to Keith. Keith, I I think that, well, not only do you have a great restaurant and food, I I go there all the time. I love the way you have set up your to go option where you can just order and grab the the meals from your shelving there. It's it's a wonderful, I think, precision, effective operation that you run, coupled out with some really delicious chicken and the sides, the sides are, man, they're just as good as the chicken. But I will say, Keith, I am very interested in knowing what your concerns are with respect to systemic racism, any obstacles you may have faced as a restaurateur. From everything from your supply to your customer base to the marketing, how we can, as a city, improve upon your business, what you would like to see us do when it comes to COVID and the kind of operations that we can improve upon in Daly City in particular. We 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 now have a full complement of our Small Business Commission. And I'm sure they're going to be starting soon and would love to have your input when those meetings happen on how we can make Daly City better for our businesses, especially businesses like yours. Turning now to Kalima, Kalima, you have been a force in Daly City for a very long time. And when you speak, people listen. And it's because you're very deliberate and meaningful in what you say. And the way you say it, say it, it comes with such tremendous passion, sincerity, and real deep, I I think, thinking. And and you and you don't, you know, you don't just talk, but you offer some real solutions and give us a way to finding a way to understanding what you're about and what the community wants and needs. I very much appreciate you and and how you contribute to to our community. So I think it's really apropos that you be one of the people that the mayor honored today because of your voice in the community. Let me say to Jordan, Jordan, I have not had the honor and privilege of meeting you. I will say, however, I have followed you significantly from the day that you started your protest across Daly City. I've watched you. I've looked at all the social media posts about you. I'm looking forward to the day that I actually can meet with you, but more importantly, to listen to you and your concerns. I think you started something very big. And I'm hopeful that it will continue and that we will take what you have to say, what your community has to say and in an effort to also help combat the systemic racism. You have started a dialogue in our community. And in particular, you've raised my consciousness of what we need to do. I've asked, I've started asking things like, when it comes to proposals for Daly City with vendors, I've asked questions like, how can we open up our process to make sure we are more inclusive into the black community, black and brown community in particular? What are the barriers that result in them systemically getting excluded unconsciously or not? And because of those kind of protests and voices, you've really raised the level of my consciousness and I think for the our council as well. So I urge you to continue that. You are having an effect. And we are getting, we are being a better community and city for everyone because of that. So, Mayor, I want to thank you for your selections. They are outstanding. And this is really all the more reason to celebrate Black Lives in Daly City. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Vittaventura. And last but not least, we have Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I see Kalima smiling already. I'm going to go down the line here. And first of all, I want to congratulate every single one of you. The selection process by the mayor is definitely relevant and covered all the bases. I'll first start off with Keith. Keith, I've been to your restaurant a few times. And believe me, every time I pass by and the times I want to go, there's a line out the door. So I have to settle for Los Matates next door to you and get me a burrito. Both of you guys are good. So keep up the good work. And you are definitely recognized and definitely a part of our community. To Kalima, Kalima, it's been echoed here thus far. And I've seen you, and especially on the San Mateo County calls. And you basically, you don't care about yourself. What you have shown to people is your care for the equity in Daly City. And you even said it tonight. And that is a problem. We are the largest city and we are not being recognized. And Kalima, without your voice, we probably would not be known or have the things that we have now. To this very day, and I'm going to say, even the San Mateo County Times don't even write about Daly City. But you know what? We're going to keep on moving on. And Kalima, knowing that you are here, we will be on that map and we're going to continue to do good things. So in in those, some of those committees where I am not there, if Kalima's there, it's all taken care of. And I know it will be done. You think about others more than you do yourself. And it's very much appreciated. Okay, to Jordan, Jordan, I met you with the event that transpired at City Hall. It was well prepared. It was a very peaceful event. And I'm going to say, my hat is off to you. At the age of seventeen, when I was seventeen, I did not have a clue. And you are so far ahead of the game. You're going places, young man. You said something this evening that really came full circle to me. And I will never, ever forget this. What you said this evening is, I consider Daly City my home. That really means a lot because that's what we strive to do in our city. And to hear that coming from you, I know you would be an advocate for Daly City should anyone talk bad about Daly City. So thank you so much, Jordan. That's something I am always going to remember. And knowing that you said that, that really means a lot to me. Speaking of home, home to me means family. And not only for the community and all those who contribute within our community, but to Daly City, its residents, and especially our staff, which is family. Councilmember De Giovanni alluded to it, and she actually beat me to the punch. I would like to take this time, as the mayor had made mention with the upcoming event, well, guess who's behind that event and who does a lot of the legwork? And that's Leslie K. Dubridge of Daly City Parks and Our Recreation Department. And her mom was a founding member and especially the work that's done with our seniors. So I would like to take this opportunity at this time to recognize her, give her honorable mention. For those who will attend the event, she's probably going to be the emcee. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you so much. Job well done. And thank you for what you do for Daly City and making Daly City look good. Thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. It was really important to me to be able to not only share the proclamation with one person, but with more than one person and really a reflection of what wonderful leaders we have in our community, from the small business community to the education and community front and to the young, young people in, in our schools and our neighborhoods. So with Keith, Keith knows this story. I told him that when I actually had my latest baby, who is now seven weeks old, I actually was craving fried chicken. And, and, and I didn't know I was pregnant yet, but you know what? I, it was, I was definitely frequenting your, your, your store. And I'll never forget that. I only realized two weeks later, I'm like, I'm, you know, I ate probably all kinds of fried chicken. Your fried chicken, the Korean fried chicken, like everything. But so that's going to be with me forever. As my baby girl grows up, she'll know that story. And Kalima, you know, wonderful work with you and along with all that you do. If all of you don't know, she is avid, avid, like out there in COVID, doing testing. And that's the kind of leader she is. She's also on-the-ground leader. She's doing the testing every week for our communities. And so not only in kind of policymaking or just advocating, she's actually on the ground. So thank you for that and your consistency and care for our community. And also with Jordan, we know our future is bright with you. Continue on in inspiring your peers. So once again, we'll see each other on the virtual online event. Thank you. Moving on to our agenda, we have the approval of the minutes of January 25th, 2021. Do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes, please?
Motion for approval of the minutes?
Motion to approve the minute.
First, from Councilmember De Giovanni, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilmember Sylvester. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we have approval of the agenda. Some, a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So move.
Okay, moved by Vice Mayor Dasmakbawal.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Sylvester. All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you. Now moving on to the consent agenda. If there are no items being pulled by the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Madam Mayor? I was asking to pull item number two so we can recognize the new member of the committee, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee and item number four.
Okay, so with the items being pulled, item number two and item number four, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the remaining items.
Okay, thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Vittaventura, seconded by Councilmember De Giovanni. And at this point, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And now moving on to item number two, appointing Daly City Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee member. And do we have a staff here?
Yes, I can do a little quick presentation on that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Director Chu.
Yes, good evening, Councilmembers. The item is for the appointment of the BPAP Committee Member, the Daly City Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. The BPAP Committee is a committee that meets quarterly and they review pedestrian and bikeway improvement projects, project funding applications, as well as providing input on existing roadway and bikeway conditions that affect pedestrians and bicycling activity in Daly City. The committee consists of seven voting members approved by the city council. Current members are Clayton Koo, Melinda Hugh, Wiser, Manzano, Rachel Goodman, Henry Martinez, and Alan Yu. In September of 2020, Natasha sent a application into Daly City indicating she was interested in joining the committee. However, at that time, there were no vacancies. Later, towards the end of this year, EE Sami resigned from the committee because she was relocating out of Daly City. In January of 2021, Natasha submitted her application to fill the vacant position. Staff reviewed the application and staff is recommending that Natasha Upphill fill the remaining term for EE Sami, which expires on June 30th, 2022. If the appointment is approved, there will not be any vacancies left on the committee. Natasha works for the City of San Jose as a transportation planner. She's a longtime bicycle and pedestrian advocate in the San Francisco Bay Area. And she's served on the Caltrans District Four Pedestrian Advisory Committee. She lives in Daly City for about one year. And she fits and meets the qualifications to be a member. So with that, staff is recommending that the council approve and appoint Natasha Upphill to the BPAP Committee to fill out the remaining term, which expires on June 30th, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Chu. Are there any other comments from my colleagues?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just in short, I want to thank that Mr. Chu and to say congratulations to Natasha because I believe that our council does and the public really know the backgrounds of that committee is kind of under, underknown because, in my view, because they act, they are not on Zoom and many of the members, they're all very humble, but they have quite extensive backgrounds. I mean, pretty impressive backgrounds in planning and transportation. I mean, it's pretty impressive what they do for their careers. And we are very, very lucky to welcome Natasha and all of the members of the committee as they serve, and some of them have been serving for numerous years. I believe Clayton Koo and Henry are some of the beginning ones. And thanks Shirley as well and Mr. Chu, that, that many of them and Rachel and all of them. They really enjoy it and they have great knowledge and they have a lot to offer. So I applaud you. So this committee has really done and is very informative and very extremely knowledgeable, along with Mr. Chu, Shirley, at that thing. So thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I thought it was important that we recognize them.
You're welcome, Councilmember De Giovanni. And at this point, I move to appoint the Daly City Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee Members, or Member.
Natasha, a second.
All in favor, this has to be by voice, oh, no, by roll call because we pulled it, right?
No, you can do it by voice vote this time.
All in favor, say aye.
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 So for the next agenda item, actually, Councilmember De Giovanni, it's not part of the consent agenda.
Oh, it's on our item, apologize.
So it's, yeah, so we don't need to pull it. We actually will just move directly into it.
Thank you.
Commentary down the line and we'll have a full staff report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
So moving on to item number four, it's our public hearing. It's the conduit financing for Midway Village Affordable Housing. We have our staff, Ms. Betsy Sobel with us today, and I will hand it off to her. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. In June of 2020, the council approved entitlements for redevelopment of Midway Village by Mid Peninsula Housing Coalition. The approved project will include a total of 555 affordable housing units. The initial phase of the development will include 147 units for low-income households. The total cost to build Phase One is estimated at $128 million and MidPen intends to use a combination of tax credits and tax-exempt bonds to finance a major portion of this. They have selected the California Municipal Finance Authority, or CMFA, to issue approximately $65 million in bonds. In order for all or a portion of the bonds to qualify as tax-exempt, the City of Daly City must conduct a public hearing and pass a resolution approving the bond issuance. The bonds for this project will be the sole responsibility of the borrower and the city will have no contractual, financial, or legal obligation or liability for the repayment of these bonds. In addition, these bonds will not constitute any type of indebtedness to the city. Once the city holds the public hearing, adopts the required resolution, no other participation of the city in the actions of the CMFA or in the bond financing will be required. And with that, I'm available, along with staff from the developer and the CMFA, to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions from my colleagues at this moment? See, seeing none. At this point, do we open the public hearing? Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Do we have any, anyone for this item, please? No, or?
Mayor, I don't believe anyone signed up to speak on this through the Zoom registration.
Okay, thank you very much.
Motion to close public hearing at this time?
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, and now we're back on to the approval of this item. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Motion to approve this item, item number four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember De Giovanni, a second by Vice Mayor Dasmakbawal. And because this is, I think, we, yeah, we need a roll call vote. So at this point, Madam City Clerk, let me have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. De Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much. One moment, please. I'm so sorry, my agenda got lost in the shuffle. Let me find it one moment. Thank you for your patience. I accidentally closed that. Too many, too many things on my screen. Moving on to item number five, a very important item for all of us. We are excited to see what our financial overview is. We know this is the time of the year and also really important for ourselves and my colleagues, but also for the community. So at this point, we have Mr. Nevin, or Nevin, on the floor. And so for the financial overview, and I believe you have a presentation, so it'll be shared on the screen.
Madam Mayor?
Yours? Go ahead.
Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council, I am going to do a brief introduction for Nevin while he gets set up. So just by way of background, as you recall, last year, only about five months into this pandemic, the city delivered a 10-year budget forecast to the council. We debuted the new forecasting tool. We had a presentation by someone from Management Partner, Steve Toller. And that was back in July 2020. And so things have shifted a little bit since then. There were many sort of unknown, every city was really facing unknown factors at that time. For instance, how long the pandemic would last, how extreme the already expected recession would become, how the city would take emergency actions to try to reduce spending at that time. And now that we have an updated forecast for you, we're going to be using the latest data on how our revenues were hit and the ways that we were successful so far in reducing costs. Also tonight, you'll hear about the last decade of workforce and program reductions in Daly City. I think it's been a while since we went back and looked at the Great Recession. I believe at that time, maybe it was only Councilmember Vittaventura who was on the council at that time. So I think it's worth looking at what it looked like before the Great Recession versus now, especially with the impact of COVID. And Daly City, like almost every city in the county, if not the state, still faces a long-term structural deficit. It will continue to make council budget decisions difficult, but you're not alone. If you look throughout the state, everybody's looking at these same sort of issues. Some, some cities caught up faster than the, from the recession, the Great Recession than we did. And some people, some cities are impacted greater by COVID than we are. So we're kind of all in the same boat, but that we're, we- So we're kind of all in the same boat, but that we're, the council still has some difficult decisions to make. And, you know, we also understand that in these challenging times, we want to ensure that the council is comfortable, that the budget process is transparent from, you know, the information that you're getting from staff so that you can turn around and feel comfortable in telling the community and community members and residents that the budget process is transparent. So that's just a little bit of background. I'm going to turn it over to the Assistant City Manager, Stephen Stolti. And he's going to briefly talk now about Measure Q. And then later on, the Director of Finance, Nevin, will get a little bit deeper into Measure Q. So Stephen, take it away.
Thank you, Shawna. So the good news.
Mayor, Mayor, can I make, make a comment before we get into the presentation?
Oh, Councilmember Sylvester, please do.
All right, thank you. Shawna, thank you for the segue into what we are about to hear and see. I want to take the opportunity at this time, before we get into this presentation, you know, whenever I hear budget presentation, it's always doom and gloom. But from the outside perspective, from what I've seen this past year, I want to give you kudos for everything that you have done for our city. I know services have been impacted in certain ways. And you have managed to move things around so that we could maintain the minimal services and at least still provide for all of our constituents in Daly City. And actually, it seems like to me, quite truthfully, truthfully, that we didn't have a problem. But now I guess the numbers will show, but I want to give you kudos for what you have done for our city and with Mr. Nevin and Stephen in making this presentation possible. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome, Councilmember Sylvester, and thank you so much, City Manager Moppy.
Okay. So given the hit that we've taken in the recession, there is good news. And that is that our community overwhelmingly supported Measure Q, which was the Daly City Local Recovery and Relief Measure back in the November election. More than 72% of the voters approved this half-cent sales tax, which is a really high amount. So you'll hear more about the expected revenue and when it will start during this presentation. But Measure Q, it is a good sign for our recovery from the pandemic as our only source of new revenue right now. We'll make sure that allocating those funds is connected to community priorities. As a best practice, just so you know, we started annual community surveying in 2018 with the help of a professional survey firm. And they ensure a statistically valid result. Surveys are offered in multiple languages and they gather feedback across different age groups, ethnic groups, and even geography in the city. We also launched the Daly City Discussion, if you remember that, last year. And that further refined community priorities that were identified in earlier survey, surveying efforts. The goal of all this work is just to continually confirm or reevaluate perceptions of city government services and to find out what is most important to our community. And we do specifically ask about spending priorities. And from that effort, we know that a majority of our community highly values the long-term financial stability of the city and feels that self-reliance during uncertain times is important. You'll hear more about other identified priorities later in the presentation. And I just want to let you know, we'll be taking a much deeper dive into Measure Q at the City Council Retreat in February and the Town Hall focused on Measure Q on March 15th.
Thank you.
I'll pass it back to Shawna.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Mr. Stolti. City Manager?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Stephen. So before I turn it over to Tim, I just want to say thank you to the voters of Daly City, wholeheartedly for approving Measure Q. We will continue to partner with you so that we have your input before budget decisions are made. And just thanks again, that was a really huge triumph for the City of Daly City. And it will help us out tremendously going forward with our fiscal sustainability. All right, Mr. Nevin, take it over.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm happy to be here with you this evening, sharing this financial overview. And I'm just about to get that onto the screen. Stephen, if I'm able to share that? Yes, I should have sharing turned on, yes. Okay, for some reason, I'm not able to. Okay, do you want me to share it for you? Sure. Okay. Actually, if, let's see, you already have it turned on? Yeah. For some reason, I can't share it. I wanted to have it on both screens here. Okay, try it now, I changed to setting. Got it. Okay, we can see it. Okay, great, everyone can see this. Thank you, Stephen. Thank you again, Mayor and Council, and thank you to the City Manager and to the Assistant City Manager for the introduction. So tonight, we will be looking at the financial overview. Our agenda this evening will look at a recap of the financial position from July of 2020. That was the last presentation to you with a financial overview, financial projection within it. After that, we'll look at the emergency actions by the city in response to the pandemic and recession. We'll look at some revenue updates and some latest projections. I want to show you some, especially related to sales tax and how the pandemic is affecting the sales taxes here in Daly City. And next, we'll take a look at the history of workforce and service reductions. We'll, we'll compare fiscal year 2011 to the current year, fiscal year 2021. And then a Measure Q update again. And then we'll just wrap it up and look at next steps as well. So first, we'll take a look at the city's financial position again, as presented to the City Council in July of 2020. So five months into the pandemic and the first shelter-in-place order, Steve Toller from Management Partners presented a 10-year budget forecast. This forecast used information available at the time regarding the recession brought on by the pandemic and projected revenue declines. Without emergency measures, the city would have depleted reserves by as early as fiscal year 2023 and completely erased a small recovery the city made since the Great Recession. So assumptions about revenues and expenditures have been trued up with actual data since the July 2020 presentation. Fiscal year 2020 has closed. And we saw revenues higher than forecasted by $5 million. And expenditures were lower than forecasted by $10 million, especially in response that the city took when the pandemic began. Despite this $15 million true-up, the financial outlook still remains in the red. I want to also point out that for these graphs and all the graphs in this presentation, we're looking at projections only for the general fund. And for each set of graphs that are side by side, like these two here, the graph on the left will show general fund surplus or deficit for each fiscal year. And the graph on the right will show the general fund reserves over time. On the general fund reserves graph on the right, the green line indicates the preferred reserve target of 25% or three months of operating expenses. So three months divided by 12 months, a 25% preferred reserve target. And the red line indicates a minimum, minimum reserve target of 17% or two months of operating expenses. So looking at emergency actions that were taken, the council responded quickly to the pandemic and emergency actions were taken to immediately reduce expenditures. Daly City focused on freezing certain positions citywide and only filling essential vacancies on a case-by-case basis. The positions identified here are the positions that were frozen. The city also focused on placing further delays on non-urgent capital improvement projects and furloughing seasonal part-time staff in library and recreation where in-person programs have been suspended. Another action taken was to roll over the fiscal year 2020 budget to fiscal year 2021, the current fiscal year. As one of the city's most important revenue sources, sales tax took an immediate hit due to economic shutdowns. It was important for the city to make start financial decisions on the area most within its control, and that is expenditures. The city also closely monitored and updated its financial forecasting model with the latest data as the depths of the reception, sorry, the recession and longevity of the pandemic were largely unknown in the first half of 2020. These graphs demonstrate the impact of emergency actions on our financial forecast. First, the expenditure reductions mitigated the recessionary impact in the short term. In other words, the amount of deficit in the city budget decreased in size and duration. Over the long term, reserve levels are maintained above the preserved, sorry, the preferred reserve target. The green line is important to note, however, that this 10-year forecast does not include unfreezing of positions or the addition of new programs and services. Forecast also does not include any plans to address long-term pension and benefit costs, any needed and delayed capital improvement projects, including projects to address ADA compliance for city buildings. Again, due to emergency actions, long-term projections show general fund reserves meeting target reserve amounts. Please note once again that the green line in the graph on the right represents the preferred reserve target of 25% of annual operating expenses or three, three months of expenses. The red line, again, the minimum reserve target of 17% of operating expenses or two months of operating expenses. City Council adopted the official reserve policy in 2020 to ensure the city would have funds available available in the event of catastrophic emergencies, such as an earthquake, wildfire, or other natural disaster due to our location on the San Andreas Fault and the possibility of, quote, the big one increasing over time. The general fund reserves offer a source of funds to draw upon to pay for immediate needs over a short period of time. Before we move on to revenue updates that I want to let you know about, I wanted to take a second to look at a scenario if the city were to unfreeze those positions today that were, that were frozen. Staffing is the largest expenditure in Daly City, as well as other cities. Our staff provide direct services and programs for our community. As such, freezing vacant positions was an emergency short-term measure to address the pandemic and recession. Unfreezing positions in our forecast, as you can see, shows a long-term structural deficit on the left in the red box and a decline in general fund reserves below target levels by as early as fiscal year 2026. So recovery from the pandemic will be, will be difficult without considering changes to programs and services. Next, I want to just give a couple of updates regarding revenue projections that have changed recently and since the pandemic. There are two sources of revenue that have been impacted. One, due to a shortfall that I'll go into in the next slide from vehicle license fees from the state of California and another sales tax, which was impacted by the pandemic and the recession. And also, my department will continue to monitor closely all the revenue sources and keep you updated as the current recession continues. But the first source of revenue I'd like to discuss is vehicle license fees. BLF is an annual fee on the ownership of a registered vehicle paid to the state via the DMV. The fee is 2% of a vehicle's current assessed, estimated value. Cities and counties receive 75% of the fees collected by the state. And those fees and revenue that we receive represents 12% of the general fund revenues in just the year 2020. Next, we'll look at the decline in sales tax revenue since the beginning of the pandemic. Sales tax revenue represents 13% of general fund revenues in 2020. And our reliance on sales tax actually exacerbates our recovery as sales tax was first to take a hit from economic closures during the pandemic. The city's main source of revenue, luckily, property taxes, has not taken a hit yet because downward pressure on home prices lagged behind immediate recessionary impacts. We'll continue to monitor this important revenue category as well alongside the County Assessor's Office. In fiscal year 2020, last fiscal year, the state of California paid the county of San Mateo and all cities within the county, most, but not all, of what was due to us in BLF revenue. A $10.1 million shortfall was created countywide. This shortfall amounted to $567,526 for the city. And just last month, the state included in their budget monies to pay our county and cities the full $10.1 million shortfall. So we currently await our payment for the $567,000. That was a shortfall from last year. This fiscal year 2020, 21, the state of California created a $69 million shortfall from what is owed our county and cities. The city's portion of this year's shortfall is just over $3.8 million. And with the good faith shown by the state in paying our county and cities for last year's shortfall, we are hopeful that the state will account for this year's $69 million shortfall in their budget next year. Even in this positive scenario, though, it is equivalent to the city providing the state with a $3.8 million interest-free loan for one year or longer. So not insignificant. Next, I want to look at sales taxes. And this chart provides a glimpse into the effects of the COVID-19 recession on the city's revenue. This chart shows actual sales tax revenue from 2016 through 2000, fiscal year 2020, and then estimated sales tax revenue for fiscal years 2021 through fiscal year 2024. In 2019, sales tax revenue peaked, excuse me, at $14.8 million. We ended fiscal year 2020 at $12.7 million, a decline of 14.2%. Fiscal year 2021 is expected to reach 12.2 million, which is another 3.9% decline. Sales tax revenue is expected to increase, though, beginning in fiscal year 2022. However, we're not projected to reach our fiscal year 2019 levels even by 2024. We're closely monitoring sales tax with our consultant. And we get updates, we do formal updates quarterly, but I also talk to him in between our quarterly updates to get the latest information on where sales tax are going, not only here in Daly City, but in the state of California. But this graph shows sort of how the pandemic is affecting city revenue and the decrease, at least for a two-year period, hopefully followed by the increase starting in fiscal year 2022 and backup. Well, being on the topic of sales taxes, I wanted to just take a minute and discuss sales taxes as they relate directly to our Daly City experience. So here in Daly City, general revenue, general retail, excuse me, accounts for the highest percentage of sales tax revenue, closely followed by food products, which includes grocery stores as well as restaurants, and transportation, which includes car dealerships and gas stations. Taken together, these top three categories make up 90% of sales tax revenue in the city. Each city is unique in the composition of its sales tax categories. Colma, for example, would have a much higher percentage for transportation than Daly City does due to the ceremony Boulevard auto dealerships. And now I just want to take another close look at sales tax revenue for calendar year 2020. Since the pandemic began, each quarter in 2020 has declined year over year. So the first quarter of 2020 versus the first quarter of 2019, the second quarter of 2020 versus the second quarter- The second quarter of two thousand and twenty versus the second quarter of two thousand and nineteen and the third quarter of two thousand and twenty versus the same third quarter in two thousand and nineteen. The first quarter of two thousand and twenty saw twenty seven point nine percent decline year over year. Mainly due to Governor Newsom's executive order in early two thousand and twenty, soon after the pandemic, which allowed. California businesses to defer their sales tax payments until later in the year. So that's why there's such a, a big decrease in the first quarter of this calendar year. Looking at the third quarter here in this chart. It shows part of the COVID nineteen recessionary story. So general retail, brick and mortar retail businesses have seen a dramatic drop in revenue. During shelter in place and some of those businesses around the country closed their doors for good in two thousand and twenty. In Daly City, general retail sales tax revenue declined twenty four point nine percent, as you can see in the chart, in. The third quarter of two thousand and twenty compared with the third quarter of two thousand and nineteen. Food products also saw a decline in the third quarter of eight point five percent. Restaurants saw a much steeper decline than grocery stores as more people ate in and, and did not go out to, to eat as much and spent more groceries. Transportation also declined dramatically down twenty three point eight percent for the quarter as new car sales declined. And less gas was purchased again due to, to shelter in place. Next, we're going to take a look at the historical workforce and service reductions and comparing Daly City and fiscal year. Two thousand and eleven to Daly City now in fiscal year two thousand and twenty one. So the next three slides will show workforce and program reductions department by department. Our city employees are responsible for providing direct services and programs to our community and therefore workforce cuts essentially surplus cuts. As a result of workforce reductions over the past ten years, the community services center was outsourced. The Economic and Creative Development Business Center was closed, same day plan reviews were eliminated. Plan review times increased from one to three weeks, affordable housing and long range planning efforts have been delayed. Finance closed central services, eliminating central purchases and in-house printing. In fire engine ninety five was closed, resulting in increased overtime costs. And reduced operational readiness and emergency response capacity, as well as a reduction in the number of fire inspections conducted. With increased employment turnover, HR experienced significant increases in recruitment costs. Uh, next, the, this slide is dedicated to library and recreation services in an effort to reduce operational costs. Library department and the recreation division of the Parks and Recreation Department consolidated July first, two thousand and eleven. Which included the previous transfer for the parks division to the public works department, which took place on January first, two thousand and eleven, six months prior. Program participation fees were increased by five. Uh, the administrative office, office hours were reduced, various youth sports and teen programs were eliminated. Production and mailing of the activity guide were reduced. All branches, all library branches experienced a reduction in hours and service days. Purchase of book and media collections reduced. And online library resources such as online tutoring, children's ebooks and interactive language learning applications have been eliminated. Now, moving over to police dispatch services were outsourced to the counties. Minimum staffing requirements were lowered. Overtime cost increased, resources for community crime prevention and quality of life projects are limited. Troll time, traffic enforcement, engineering review and community engagement efforts have been reduced. And asset forfeiture is reduced since various investigative aspects have transitioned to the county and federal tax task businesses. On, with regard to public works, deferred capital improvement projects. Deferred replacement of building and facility systems and vehicles to maintain or repair beyond useful life. Eliminated programs such as sidewalk repair for homeowners and red tip program. Delayed large sidewalk and roadway projects, reduced preventative maintenance and outsourcing. Of projects previously completed in-house. These expenditure reductions were required to balance previous budgets. It's important to review these reductions in the context of our recovery from the. Recovery from the Great Recession. Since then, the city has not been in a secure enough financial position to reinstate previously kept programs and services. While other cities with more diverse sources, sources of revenue in the US recovered more quickly, Daly City's local economy. And the city's reliance on property and sales tax for most of its revenue have not created as robust of a recovery here. Reductions since the Great Recession have become the new normal for our city operations and have exacerbated quality of life issues for Daly City residents. Our budget, however, has remained balanced and Daly City staff have proved to be resilient and determined. To meet the challenge of additional responsibilities. Must be stated, however, that there is a direct correlation between the size of our city's workforce and the programs that we are able to offer. A reduced workforce does impact the level of services provided to our community. Uh, this chart compares Daly City to both the largest cities by population in the county and, and the smallest cities. The right hand column calculates employees per one thousand residents. As you can see, San Mateo, Redwood City and South San Francisco have larger workforces per resident to provide services and programs. To their communities, even the smallest cities like Colma and Brisbane offer a larger employee to resident ratio. Daly City has the lowest rate in San Mateo County, except for San Carlos, which outsources fire and police services. It is important to note that these figures compare full time staffing within the general fund only for each city. These numbers do not include staffing associated with enterprise departments, such as our Department of Water and Wastewater Resources. Which is funded by Ray Pairs. Taking a closer look at staffing in Daly City, the city's workforce has shrunk by eight point five percent since the Great Recession. Uh, Daly City is the largest population of all cities in San Mateo County and is projected to stay in this position over the long term. Daly City also remains near the bottom in revenue per capita. While the city's population has increased five percent since fiscal year two thousand and eleven, our workforce has decreased. Making less staff available to our residents. Again, this eight point five percent reduction in our workforce correlates to a reduction in the level and timeliness of services, as well as the number. Programs that may be offered to the community. Since fiscal year two thousand and eleven, most departments have experienced a reduction in staffing. You can see that over a ten year period in that total of thirty general fund positions were reduced. Some of the most public facing services through our public works, library and recreation services departments have experienced the largest reductions. Over this time period, the city council has made very difficult decisions in prioritizing services and has tried to preserve the most essential community services. And even with an estimated annual savings of almost five point eight million dollars by reducing our workforce. The city's general fund still experiences a structural deficit. Even with additional revenue sources, the city would not be able to restore to fiscal year two thousand and eleven. Operations and just to, two footnotes on this slide that outsourced dispatch and the community services center and the eliminated. Business Enterprise Center are not included in the position totals. Since those positions were either outsourced or, or eliminated. And also with regard to public safety, this does not include current frozen positions that were, as indicated on an earlier slide. Uh, these charts show the, the cost to restore the city's workforce to the, the levels that we looked at in. In the previous slide by adding back the eight point five million dollars annually into the forecast, starting in fiscal year two thousand and twenty two. Uh, it becomes clear fairly quickly how full workforce restoration is financially infeasible. Uh, the preferred reserve target of twenty five percent is not achieved by even the following fiscal year two thousand and twenty three. And the minimum reserve target is lost the following year in fiscal year two thousand and twenty four. But I, I think at this point, I've, I've shown you maybe a bleak enough picture, uh, no more charts after this slide, I promise. But I, I do look forward to working with all of you in the city manager's office to address the financial challenges that we face here in Daly City. And just as the introduction and administration of the COVID nineteen vaccines have led to a good deal of hope for all of us. I think it is important to remember that Daly City has experienced financial trials in the past. We will continue to face financial trials, especially in economic downturns. Uh, but just like in the past, most notably with the Great Recession, Daly City has always been resilient. And we will weather this storm as well. The COVID recession looks to impact our city on a much smaller scale than the Great Recession did, and hopefully it will take us many fewer years to recover this time. Uh, and part of that sentiment about resilience of Daly City was expressed last November when in the midst of COVID pandemic, Daly City voters. Approved Measure Q. Measure Q is Daly City's local recovery and relief measure, and here you see a reminder of the official ballot language that voters considered in the two thousand and twenty election. And the city wants to thank our community for participating in this election and for approving Measure Q. Measure Q received more than seventy two percent of the vote, as Stephen mentioned, which is overwhelming level of support, and we are very grateful. We're committed to keeping the public informed as the city council considers how to allocate this funding. And we want to continue hearing from our residents and businesses about how best to spend this revenue. And let me provide an overview of Measure Q as well. Measure Q is a half cent sales tax that is estimated to provide six million dollars in annual revenue. The tax will go into effect throughout the city on April first, two thousand and twenty one. Funds will build over time, so the six million dollars is not available all at once. Um, and also we won't be receiving the revenue until June of two thousand and twenty one. About a two month lag from receiving sales tax revenue from the state. And then community priorities were identified through extensive surveying and the city will continue to partner with the community on decisions related to. As your key funding, the column on the right includes community identified priorities. These priorities reflect the emergency nature of the sales tax measure and a focus on ensuring that the city can maintain local emergency services. Maintain fiscal stability, keep our cities clean and safe, and care for vulnerable community members. And also at the city council retreat later this month, we'll take a deeper dive into Measure Q and how the structure, decision making moving forward. Next steps that we wanted to look at. First of all, their current budget, budget decisions that will need to be made soon that will affect. Uh, the city for the next decade, have you seen throughout this presentation, decisions. That are made today have a long lasting impact to our financial outlook and affect all of the out years in the, in the graphs that we've been looking at. And charts and the city is not financially able to, to widely restore programs, services. That were previously lost, but we are, however, able to maintain services, we're able to build on efficiencies. And get creative with how we partner with other agencies and organizations for cost sharing. The city council will face big decisions of the next fiscal year or two in prioritizing our recovery from the pandemic. Ensuring we hear from our residents and businesses about what they need and value most will ensure that our budget process is transparent and aligned with community priorities. Making budget decisions that are resource constrained environments, the toughest job in any city because it involves prioritizing different types of services. And lastly, Measure Q represents an important source of revenue to fuel our recovery and the city is dedicated to being. A good steward of the community's financing. Upcoming actions, my office and my department will continue to monitor city revenues and recessionary impacts. And report those impacts back to you. Next, the city council retreat upcoming on February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty one and a city council town hall. Uh, on March fifth, two thousand and twenty one. And lastly, the council will consider the fiscal year two thousand and twenty two budget in May of this year as well. And lastly, I just wanted to say, um, thank you for. Allowing me to present you with this financial overview this evening. I also want to thank the city manager's office for their collaboration in this overview. And I also just wanted to say thank you, especially to my staff and especially to Amanda and Judy who helped. So much put this presentation together and staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much Director Nevin and, uh, City Manager, Manager Malby and Assistant Manager Stolti. Um, I think, um, this is, uh, really important for us to see right now. I know we have a process down the line. To see where we'll go in regards to kind of priorities with the council. But at this point, I mean. I think you've provided an overview around the steps that we've taken. Immediately and also what has transpired historically with the city of Daly City. Um, and how, um, you know, potentially with Measure Q. And really, um, thank you to the residents out there in the community that, um, really. Supported this measure in order to ensure, um, the sustainability of, uh, the services we're providing. Uh, within the city of Daly City. And so, uh, you know, there is a process for those that are watching in regards to. Looking at the, the priorities that we will be moving towards as a council. But at this point, in regards to the presentation, um, that was provided to us today. I will, uh, now ask my colleagues if they have any specific questions to staff.
Yes, I do, Mayor, I may.
Council member Sylvester.
All right, thank you. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Nevin and entire staff for putting together this presentation. Matter of fact, some of the numbers and statistics that I saw was very, very relevant. And, uh, it's going to help as we move along to make those difficult decisions. I'd like to start off by saying thank you to the voters of Daly City in regards to Measure Q. And I want to say that Measure Q is not the end all and be all for our, uh, spending in Daly City. Hard decisions will have to be made, but again, this would be very, very helpful. So I know we will have a council retreat coming up, so I'm going to provide you six areas of questions. I don't need an answer tonight, but, uh, if that can, uh, be presented to us at the retreat to help me understand, that would be great. Okay, here we go. What I saw in the presentation is basically a history of how we've been spending and where money has been going. What I did not see in the presentation is, uh, and again, I'm remaining optimistic. What I did not see is estimated sales tax revenue. Of the projects that are happening in Daly City. For instance, at Ceremony, we got a drive through that's being developed. Starbucks, Chick-fil-A, and I know it might be a year or two, but if we're looking out five to ten years. I need a rough estimate as to what additional sales taxes may come in as a result. That's one. We also have a hotel planned, uh, and we're supposed to generate TOT. And what's the estimate for the TOT revenue, uh, the, the completion of these hotel? We also have, uh, auto dealership coming in. And what is the estimated revenue for point of sales taxes, uh, that's going to be generated? See, uh, none of this I've heard, and I'm sure if we can provide some numbers, that would be great. The next area of concern that I have is vehicle license fees. In your presentation, you made mention that this is an annual fee. I know most of us who drive vehicles, they still pay this annual fee, and I can't see why we have such a big shortfall. Because everybody who drives a vehicle or registers. or registers a vehicle, uh, this is on a yearly basis, not unless the state is doing something because they have their issues as well. So if I can get more clarification on that, that would be great. Okay, that's two areas. I'm looking at the area of cost recovery for our services that we provide. It is my understanding that Daly City charges some of the lowest fees, and, uh, some cities have taken on the process of, well, if you need a permit for this, this is what the fee is. Have we done a study on all of the fees that's charged in Daly City to see if we are within that minimum, at least for cost recovery of the services that we provide? That's three. Number four, being on the council for the past few years, asset forfeiture has been something that we can utilize, and our police department has done a great job in looking for areas that we can get additional funds via asset forfeiture. I hope that this continues so that, uh, we take advantage wherever and whenever we can. And of course, we have to keep in mind that there is no supplantation. But again, the utilization of asset forfeiture. Number five, on your chart, I saw that library and recreation staff went down thirty-two percent. And I think that that's a very valuable service for our community, and I hope my colleagues, when we meet, that we consider try to, trying to restore this essential service at a minimum for, uh, our constituents. Lastly, number six. I am deeply concerned in the area where we try to cut back on staffing, especially in the area of public safety. We have no control as to when events arise, but with reduced staffing comes increased overtime. And overtime is not straight pay. That's, uh, time and a half. It may be double time if it's on a holiday. And is it really prudent to cut back staff but yet take in the increased overtime? So what I would like to also see is out of the money allocated for staffing in public safety, how much is the percentage of those funds in overtime? Could the increased spending in overtime subsidize another position? So, uh, that right now is all the questions that I have that I'm looking for an answer to later on. And, uh, if you can share the slide presentation, Mr. Nevin, with me so I can take a more deep dive. I don't know if this is the thirty-thousand-foot level, but, uh, I think it would help tremendously. I really would like to be prepared and be able to make those difficult decisions. That's all I have at this time, and I thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester, uh, for those questions. And, uh, I think staff will take note of that as we move into having our city council retreat. Yeah, there's definitely, um, you know, uh, more information that we will need down the pipeline. And I think, uh, this is an overview for us to look at. But those, uh, details in regards to many avenues we've been looking through within, uh, the council over the years that I think, uh, we look at the very optimistic approach in which many of our decisions towards development opportunities, whether it was, um, also the increase of our TOT that we did in, in, uh, these past years. I mean, all of these have been, uh, incrementally an opportunity for us to see a very kind of holistic approach and and we know that, you know, passing Measure Q was, uh, something that was necessary. And I think, you know, we look at kind of a very comprehensive approach, right, from looking at ways we can support the services our communities rely on. And so I, I, I see us, uh, looking at that further, and I'm sure our staff will be able to provide us with, uh, details. I think also, one area in which many times projections, uh, may have a lag time is around our property taxes and making sure that, um, uh, we get data from the county in that regard. Understanding that even though the market, uh, may be softening, there's still quite, uh, some activity within, um, our city. And so I think, if anything, um, to me, it, to see where we were at, and, um, now the projections with Measure Q and where we're headed, I think we're finding kind of a steady, uh, way to approach, um, you know, our financial stability. If we did not have Measure Q, we see the stark difference as well. But I think, you know, we're looking at long-term approaches for all of us to be able to, um, have, uh, a healthy financial situation within our, uh, city. But I'm hopeful. I think that there's, you know, many things on the pipe, uh, line that we have all worked on in regards to what's on the horizon.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Dijivani.
Yeah, thank you very much. And kind of like wrapping up, um, with Councilmember, Sylvester and you as well, Mayor. I liked this, when we meet again, first of all, thank you, just like everybody else, amazing city manager, Mr. Nevin, all the staff that worked on it, Mr. Stolti. I know into this, and, uh, to give us a really clear idea and for the public to know, and going back was very important because that's how our workforces had to operate and the increase of the population and the demand on them. And still, we're able, like you were saying, Mr. Nevin, like with the services that they give, but at the same time, it's very hard and they transition into COVID. So one of the things I'd like to see is per department, if it's possible. I know the workforce that we're not going to be able to restore the, the, the complete departments. But I do know that in some, like, um, Councilmember Sylvester had, uh, spoken about was the library. And I also saw where experienced that in our planning for like the permitting or even maybe, I don't know, what's easier or faster for the staff. They're working very hard and is causing a, um, lag time, not on because they're not working, but the public knows that. It's because of the COVID and, uh, other things, but each department. Um, and also, I know this in a context of things that you broke down, but I would like to really look at our ERAF, which has not really gone away, and that is, uh, very important as well for our services. And thanking the voters for Measure Q, but, uh, these are monies that are annual, even though it may be decreased, it's still things we need to look at and really break things down. Um, as my, uh, fellow colleagues are mentioning, break everything down to what we do because the mentioning of the public safety because of the staffing overtime, which is an increase to the public risk if we don't, um, commit and, uh, make sure that with the population increasing, we're going to be taking a look, I know diving deeper into our, um, because of the N95 and the great atrocities that's happened in Daly City and beyond with the wildfires and, um, what is needed there and to make sure that these are the people's money, and I think we're all aware of that, and that they need to rest assure when they rest at night that they know that they're going to be in safe hands as they voted for, and that they're going to be able to get quick response when, when they make their calls, and that it's close. You know, we do have the five stations and we have with our public safety, with our PD, but they've had significant cuts and knowing that we can't restore everything, maybe making a pathway to get there. Maybe like look at, you know, let the directors, executive, um, reach out to their staff or see what they really evaluate each department. What does it really need? What do you really need to keep going? I know finance has been working really hard, limited as well. And, uh, we had the one lady, um, doing the business license, and I know part-time one, and then she was overwhelmed, not because of her ability, but because of the, um, the amount that, that, and it helps generate our income. Again, the staff has done incredible, especially during COVID, and I owe a lot to our city manager for really, um, taking things in her hands and really has done tremendous through the COVID. I'm very proud of that. And to the staff, um, and each and every department and to the director. Incredible. And Mr. Nevin, since you've been on board, you have really brought light, and I think this is the first time I've ever seen even come, um, attending as a community member, broken down to where people can understand it. People can really see where we're going so that people out there will really know that we are trying to make a path to give them the best services and what they need and see the cuts. You know, I don't think anybody's ever done that before, so thank you for that, and I'm sure we can submit any other questions as we move forward for the town hall and for our retreat that we think of. But thank you, great presentation, and looking forward to working with them and the managing partners and all of you. Thank you very much. Excellent work. And thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Sylvester, for your input.
Thank you, Councilmember Dijivani. I, at this point, uh, any other of my colleagues that have any questions or comments?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to, um, provide some insights and a couple of questions as well. To add on to, uh, my colleague, um, Councilmember Sylvester, to also include, um, I know the Plank Commission talked about the overview or the overview of the cannabis map and, you know, where does cannabis play a role in terms of the revenue as well? But I just have a quick question as well. I know a lot of people have gone and switched over to purchasing many other groceries online, and how do we compute that? I understand that point-of-sale is where you buy and purchase, um, goods at a physical space, but with people going and, you know, ordering online and doing Safeway. I don't know what Safeway is delivering to my house, but I know there is a Safeway in Daly City. So if you can provide some guidance or some, uh, content on how does that work out? Because I know that there's been a lot of people that have been fearful of going out and buying food at the grocery store, but they've been ordering online. Does it go to the county? Does it go to the city? I just would like to get more understanding about that.
Uh, Councilmember, I can provide a, a short answer, but provide more detail later as well. That is a discussion that we have been having with our sales tax consultant, and each quarter that we've been talking to him, we've been talking about that specific issue. And on a positive note, the city is receiving sales tax revenue that maybe was not being received before. This is not just in Daly City, but in, in all cities. So there were some businesses that weren't but did not have to pay tax, taxes to local jurisdictions or to states, um, based on, uh, sales that took place where the point of delivery was in that, in that state, in that city. So we are starting to receive additional sales tax revenue that is a result of some lawsuits that have occurred. And, uh, so that is a positive trend. And as best as I can, I can try to provide you with what maybe additional revenue the city sees with respect to those sorts of transactions. So yes, on a positive note, those transactions are starting to come in already, and, uh, I will continue to, to talk to their consultant about what that means and whether we can quantify that easily and separate it from our, from our, um, revenue that's always coming. Thank you for that question.
Thank you, Mr. Nevin.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, as much for all. For those questions. Councilmember Vida Ventura.
Yes, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. Director Nevin, can you pull up that slide again that, um, talks about or illustrates the Measure Q target? Okay, there you go. Okay. So I want to echo what my other colleagues have said about really what, um, Measure Q has has done and will be doing to really provide us some, um, protection and some, uh, revenue that we can really operate our ci, our city and maintain the services. So, uh, again, I join in the gratitude of having our city manager, um, put forward a successful campaign so that we are, we have now access to, uh, just a tremendous amount of funds that we would not have otherwise had to help us maintain, um, our budget. Now, given, uh, the success of Measure Q and given some of the things that have been identified regarding some of the priorities of Measure Q, I'm, I'm, I, I'd like the staff and the council to think about maybe perhaps another measure that will, um, cover what is not covered under Q. So the reason why I'm look, interested in looking at this slide is because are there, I'm, I'm wondering if there are other areas such as Mr. Sylvester had mentioned libraries, for example, where we can ask the voters if they would be, um, in mind to perhaps help in that regard? I mean, we, we can't let the status quo hold our drive and our ambition to do better things for Daly City when the future, uh, comes around. And what I was wondering is if we can explore the idea of another measure, given that this was so well-received. Again, it was for really good reasons. But there are other, other reasons that perhaps the voters could consider, like a new library, a community center, better parks, more recreation, more activities for seniors, more student services, that kind of thing. And so, um, I'd like us to at least, uh, have that in the queue of discussion about whether or not we can improve upon another measure and bring it to the ballot. Because I do believe in forward-thinking and always trying to plan for the future. And given the resounding victory of Measure Q, uh, I'm wondering if we can do it again. So that's one we'd like, uh, us to discuss, uh, in the future, maybe at the retreat, or maybe just have it in the mind of staff to start maybe thinking about that. The other thing I'm very interested in is your graph or your illustration about the sources of revenue. And I noticed that, uh, retail and restaurants are still, uh, of primary importance. However, I'm concerned that we are entering into a new way of doing business with COVID. And perhaps what COVID has actually done is to correct some of the inefficiencies or maybe, for a better term, made it more efficient to do things a different way. For example, I know that there are more people working from home and which, for good reason, they should. But that, you know, that, that, that has another revenue source that perhaps we need to try to tap into. And are, are we not, uh, able to do that, or I want us to be able to look at maybe doing that as well? Are there more sort of, uh, people who are, uh, doing more freelance work? Are they doing more work where they're having? Are they doing more work where they're having more businesses that running out of their home? Is that something that we need to explore about getting that sort of source of revenue? And then when it comes to retail and restaurants, um, I'm concerned about the development of retail. Because I do, uh, see this explosion of online retail. Um, I mean, I, I, I think people are getting packages just about every day. And what effect will that have on our ability to raise revenue the old-fashioned way, which is going to stores? I mean, I do believe we will get through COVID and we will eliminate it and with the vaccine. And, um, I, I do believe that we are going to see a better future and a, a better time. But what happens with COVID and another COVID kind of pandemic? So unpredictable, but at least we should be ready for it. And maybe consider a different way of us targeting revenue sources. And so I'm concerned about that. Um, and then the restaurants. I actually think, um, well, let me say that I enjoy going out to restaurants. I, it's one of my most favorite things to do is to meet people, getting together with my friends and family and having a nice meal at a good restaurant, especially in Daly City. Um, but I do think that people, um, have now gone accustomed to, um, getting food delivered and the convenience of it. And, um, I, I would really like, uh, our restaurants to capitalize on that. I, I don't ever want to take their, away their ability to serve people because I, like I said, I enjoy that tremendously and I would like that to continue. But I also want the option of, of restaurants thriving in their business by doing something that would, um, enable them to continue to provide services to people by delivery at home. And then the other thing about restaurants, again, I love restaurants is, um, I'd like to try to see if we can solve the problem of outdoor dining in Daly City. You know, I, I see other cities, they've opened up sidewalks, they have, um, expanded sidewalks. They've eliminated, uh, certain structures that prevent that from happening. Uh, but I, I, I want to see, um, some activity that opens up that possibility. Again, I, I think COVID will go away, but, uh, we need to prepare just in case we, uh, have another crisis. And, um, and of course, we have to deal with the weather in Daly City and how maybe that's a big, uh, obstacle, obviously, for the fog and cold. But, um, other cities that are, um, you know, have sort of a colder climate have, have resolved that. Um, but I would like to see, I really would love to see us help our businesses and our restaurants and that sort of thing. So I guess what I'm, uh, pointing to is I would like our discussion about the revenue to be really forward-thinking, to think outside of the box and to try to come up with ways that we can do things more efficient, uh, differently and that would open up other possibilities rather than doing and relying on business as usual like we have in the past. I think we have a good team, um, a good financial team, a good management team, a good city council that can make those kind of changes. I just encourage everyone to really, uh, try to think outside of the box and come up with new ideas. So this has been a great presentation. It was honest, uh, revealing. And, uh, it, it, it made us, I think, really think about what we should be doing. And, um, this is what I love about government. And so, um, I'm excited to see what we can do moving forward. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Vida Ventura, um, for those questions and, um, insights. And so now, um, I think, uh, staff has taken down uh, many of our comments and questions that we'll be able to address, uh, within our city council retreat. Um, I think this has, uh, been a good, uh, foundation for us to discuss. And, um, uh, mentioned by, um, my, all my colleagues, uh, and within our next steps. And so, I think, uh, if, uh, we can get a copy of this to, uh, if there's any further, uh, questions that they may have to bring forth, um, on the 27th, it'd be helpful. Um, and, uh, if there's no other questions, thank you so much, uh, to the finance staff, Director Nevins and your whole team, um, City Manager Moppy and Assistant, uh, S- uh, City Manager Stolti in regards to this. I think it was mentioned, you know, many times we've had budget presentations in which there were more, uh, a lot more, uh, questions, uh, than you, than we usually do. You gave a foundation in regards to what has transpired historically, which is very important. Because it brings us to, uh, where we are today, especially around, um, the recession in the past, right? And then now that we're here in the pandemic, um, you know, there's a lot of shifts and changes. I am just extremely proud and thankful to our residents. Because, um, you know, this was an, an urgency and need and they responded. And so as we move on to the direction of the council, I feel very hopeful that we will look with a lens of necessity and need, most especially around, um, what we've seen over the course of time in regards to the safety of our residents and the emergency responses that, um, we've seen even through the pandemic, right? We've seen actually so many other issues as far as like wildfires in the Bay Area and, and whatnot. And so, um, you know, having a, a very, uh, stable and consist, consistent emergency response, I think is something that, um, every, every single, um, community member would want in regards to what we've seen in kind of the arena of fire. An emergency response and just what we've heard from and seen when people in our community need, uh, emergency response even in a time of COVID, right? Um, and we, we've seen that, uh, that's where our firefighters or EMT respond to these calls. When, um, it's, it's really kind of the cases that, um, need that emergency assistance. Uh, but I know we're going to dialogue a lot more. Um, I just know that these are some of the priorities that we've heard from. But also some of the things that we have been, um, hoping to see, um, for a very long time. And so it's, 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 um, I think the word is, uh, optimistic and also just, um, a good steady place where we're at. Yeah, we're, we're not there yet, but I think that we're moving towards a, a really, uh, good direction. Um, because to be where we're at right now, um, in regards to looking at our financials. You know, I remember when we were looking at it, uh, just, oh my gosh, last year this time. You know, we actually, well, last year this time, we actually had a lot more, um, in our account. It was really looking great. And then the pandemic hit. And then all of a sudden, that kind of changed our course. And then there was a response to change, to, to see what we can do to ensure that we weren't in a larger hole than we're at. So I just have to thank all my colleagues, the staff, everyone in the city of Daly City for, uh, doing such a team effort. Um, and, uh, we have our next steps ahead of us.
Madam Mayor, may I just add one thing? In my notes, um, I was wondering if, thank you very much, uh, Madam Mayor. I was just wondering if we could provide a analysis of the real estate. Like I know we have homes that are selling for a million dollars, like even in the Bay Shore area. The Toll Brothers homes are so, selling in advance. I believe the Hub has been selling in advance. Um, so I think that in the selling, I, I believe the market for, I, approximately eight hundred, nine hundred thousand, uh, maybe upwards to almost a million. So if there's any way to do an analysis of our, uh, developments that are already pass shovel-ready. And we know the amount that's already been built. That would be helpful as well. But thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate this. So, thank you.
Um, any other, uh, comments?
Yes, uh, Madam Mayor, um, uh, you know, I, I did not want to, uh, forget that, you know, when, when we did measure Q, really the driving, um, force of measure Q was the restoration of Engine 95. And, uh, I would like us to see, when we talk about our, um, our retreat and our study session, I really would like to see, I would like an answer to what is it going to take to fully restore Engine 95? Because I think the, can, really, um, sort of responded to that. And, and, and I, I think we need to, uh, you know, keep that promise. And, uh, so I would like to see, you know, what, what we need to do, what, how much of the restoration can we complete? I mean, um, that's something we, we def- desperately need. And if there was a priority, um, that would be number one on mine, um, because it's really what we campaigned on, what we, uh, promised the voters for. So we, we, we can't forget that as the sort of North Star, I think, for what we're, what we should be doing. So, um, that's my final comment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Vida Ventura. So, um, I think we, we do have our next steps. And, uh, for those in public, uh, that are watching and also will be providing information, there will be a town hall on, um, measure Q to hear feedback, uh, from our community members. And, uh, really an opportunity for public forum, um, and that will be on, um, the horizon as well. Um, and you'll, uh, be receiving that information. It's on March 15th. Um, and it, as usual, it, it'll be through a virtual platform at this time. And so I see our pathway ahead of us, um, within, uh, the next steps ahead. And looking forward to working with my colleagues and, uh, staff. Thank you very much.
I thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I, I won't extend this too long, but I just, um, I'm very proud of staff, finance staff, um, and my staff. You know, we, there was a lot, a lot of work trying to get as much information as possible to you and to the community without, um, without overwhelming you. And I told the staff at our last meeting, hey, you know, if they have que, if they, if they understand the information and they have questions that will help us frame the retreat, um, so that we can really hone down what the priorities are, both from the council and the community. Then we've done, uh, we've done the best that we can. And I just feel proud of my staff for at least getting to this point and that you guys are asking, uh, you all are asking pertinent questions. And we have some research to do. But honestly, that research will really help us, um, get to February 27th with a good agenda, a robust discussion and to really talk about, um, revenue sources, including measure Q and some of the other things that you brought up today and really prioritize what it will take, what, what you each want to do collectively, uh, to restore services that have been eliminated in the past and other, and other things we might want to talk about at that time. So I'm looking forward to it. So good job to everyone here. And thank you to the community for obviously voting resoundingly in favor of measure Q.
Thank you. Amazing, amazing job, uh, City Manager Shana Moppy and team. And so really comprehensive, um, and also being able to provide, um, the information on hand. And we'll also be going into a deeper dive as we, uh, head into our, uh, council retreat. Um, but great framework and also information. So thank you. Now we are moving on to our public appearances and oral communications. Mr. Stolti.
If there is any member of the public with us tonight, and I actually don't believe that there is anyone signed up to speak, but please just, uh, use the raise hand feature. I'm looking at the list here. I don't think there will be anyone. Oh, there is one. Okay, um, Stella, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. And you will have two minutes to speak. Let me just, um, clear my screen real quick. Okay, go ahead with your comment, Stella.
Thank you, Steven. Hi, my name is Stella. I'm a Daly City resident. Um, been a resident for about seven years. I'm here to, uh, represent the Thornton Beach Bluff Preserve. Um, just to make a comment to the council members, um, about the testing that is, uh, been voted to be in place. The testing seems to be very invasive and disruptive to the midst of our stables, um, and the plant life and animals that are there, um, as well as the dog walkers. On that note, there is a nesting season that is underfoot. It started in February 1 and goes to October 1. Those of us at Thornton Beach Bluff Viswa, Thornton Beach Bluff Preserve. It's the Vista that I'm talking about. Um, believe that this will be very disruptive to a lot of the bird life, um, all around. Um, that particular area, it's the blue herons are there now as well as the, um, red-tailed feathered hawks. And, um, a huge concern that we have is digging and disrupting this area can cause so much more strain on, um, the soil that is there. The Olympic Club bulldozed their hills. And just north of it and the rain is to destroy the entire golf club, uh, golf course. There was also a, uh, dog agility's course that just has completely gone away with the last storm. So just kind of giving some examples of how unstable this land is. And there's been a pattern of recent earthquakes, um, that the fault lines of the Andreas are just hundreds of feet away. So we're just worried about the testing, making this land even more unstable and just keeping it a place for the community to continue to call home and use as a great public place, um, to be outdoors and observe the nature, um, that's there. And yeah, just wanted to shout out to the Bluff Preserve. If anybody wants more information, please check out ThorntonBeachBluffPreserve.com for more photos and information. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stella, for your public comment.
Okay, I think that's the only public comment we had.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Stolti. And now we're moving on to appointments at this time. I'm looking at my colleagues to see if there are any, uh, Board Commission Membership Committee appointments this evening.
Yes, um, Mayor, I'd like to reappoint Mr. Ray Satori to the Planning Commission.
Okay, I will second that. Um, Mr. Vice Mayor? Uh, uh, do you do a roll call or all, no, just voice vote, um, sit, Ms. City Attorney?
You could just do a voice vote. It's fine.
Okay, uh, so, uh, with, uh, Vice Mayor's, um, nomination of Mr. Ray Satori, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Aye. Aye, thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Ray Satori. Um, any other, uh, board or commission, uh, appointees? Okay, uh, see, seeing none. I do have, um, one. I am nominating Louis Landos to the personnel. Okay, seeing none. I do have one. I am nominating Louis Landos to the personnel board.
Second.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Vettaventura. So at this point, all in favor, say aye.
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 Yes, I have a question on Mr. Landos. Will he be able to fulfill that role? I do recall that he had some problems before. I think he had moved out of the city.
Oh, he is still currently in the city of Daly City. And he is relinquishing his role on the recreation. And I am appointing him to the personnel board.
Oh, okay. So he's moving over, relinquishing his position, moving personnel.
I'm moving him. Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much. My vote is aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so I think, looking at my colleagues, there's no other appointments. We're moving on to council committees, item number six. I, Councilmember Sylvester, I see you looking.
Oh, no, no, no. Nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you. I was, I was kind of snickering because I was hoping for something from Dr. Rod on PCE.
And you know, I do have a report for PCE.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor. Please do.
I'm just going to highlight two, three things. I think from the last city council meeting, we had a robust conversation about having a super CCA, the California Clean Energy, like a conglomerate with all these different Bay Area, Bay Area Clean Energy organizations or corporations. And we're, we're like an entity stage right now. We're going into just like, like, like beginning talks. So we've been discussing that a lot. The two other things that I'd like to highlight is, there was a, let me just go here. So, sorry. Oh, here it is. So we, there was a presentation that was put together by Supervisor David Pine, Councilmember Ray Muller from, and then San Mateo County Office of Sustainability, Carolyn Blod. And they proposed a San Mateo County Climate Alliance between the Office of Sustainability, PCE, and then Willing Cities, committed to advancing and fast-tracking the transition to a zero-carbon economy. So that was proposed at PCE last meeting. And a lot of it has to do with climate priorities. So some of the climate priorities that they want to talk about is phasing out fossil fuel in homes and buildings, electric vehicles for all, healthy alternatives to driving such as transit, carpool, biking, walking, telecommute and smart housing policies, and integrate equity and to engage communities. So I think probably a conversation between Stephen and I, they kind of want to see which cities would adopt a, or to be part of this commission. So that's something that's new. And also, one thing that was also brought up was the Citizen Advisory Committee for PCE, they created a statement on equity that I am, that I joined in to help with. And basically what it was is that they, I'm trying to read the draft. This is a draft that is still in the beginning stages of creating a final equity statement. But this is what they have. They said, "In light of the community's focus on anti-racism and Black Lives Matter movement following the death of George Floyd in May of 2020, and other continuing instances of systemic racism and institutional violence against black people, the Penitent Clean Energy CAC Equity Working Group has worked over the past few months on a statement that would embody the commitment of the organization to ensure equity and inclusion in their work. The working group recognizes that there are many forms of discrimination that impact people from different backgrounds, but the growing awareness of significant violence and discrimination against people of color or black indigenous, black, people of color, BIPOC is our current focus. And we are committed to developing a framework that will eventually address discrimination in all its forms." And they have a first draft. And I volunteered to be part of the committee to help create a final draft. So they're looking at, seeing if PC could commit to making anti-racism top of their, top of their mind during decision-making, thinking about how we can probably spread resources and money towards different programs focusing on low-income communities and then pursuing equity in energy generation and programs that will focus on low-income households, black families, Latinx families, indigenous folks. So, you know, we're, there, I'm just glad that, you know, PCE is actually trying to address some of the things that are happening politically within access to clean energy. And that's about it.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Dasmagwal for that. It's really important work around, you know, just in general, having clean energy, but also making sure it is accessible to our communities. So thank you very much.
Mayor, can I just say how really proud I am that Dr. Dasmagwal is on that committee? Because, you know, he, when he presents on Clean Energy, just you see this light in his eye and he really does bring forward some really good information for us. And I was on that committee a while back. A lot of that information just sort of blew over my head. But Dr. Rod really sort of has grown into it, has appeared to love it. And so I'm hoping you keep him on there just as a personal preference because he really provides some good updates. So thank you, Dr. Rod.
Thank you, Councilman Ray.
Agreed. You're still on there. So, thank you. Any other council committee retreats?
Madam Mayor?
Retreats, council committee updates?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Dejivani, you have the question.
Thank you very much. So it was the first meeting that we've had in a while for SF Roundtable. For those of you who don't know, that we address a lot of the noise-based issues as representatives from the county and from each individual city. Palo Alto is very active in wanting to become a part of it, but there's been much discussion and there hasn't been any vote on it yet. But we went through the ad hoc committees and went through the bylaws and make sure that are the ground-based noise does still exist and the takeoff and the technical committee exists and the strategic planning committee does still exist. And we have many new members, as we know, because of the recent elections. So we're giving them time to think about which committees they would like to be on. But I will be serving also on the, they asked for the Legislative Committee of the SF Roundtable and along with Mayor Schneider and other ones that would like to serve with Congresswoman Jackie Spears, representative as well. Because she has put forth 18 bills, as we know, legislation to last in 2020, that she has not been able to address as many because of the current administration, I mean, the past administration. So hopefully that we'll be able to move those forward and I'll bring them back to council when that occurs. And maybe we can do something locally as well. So thank you for your time. And so that's the update for that one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. And if there's no other council committee reports, I do have one. For the Bay Area Water Supply Conservation Agency, I will be sitting on their Board Policy Committee as their vice chair and happy to serve in that capacity in a deeper dive around the policies in making sure our water is accessible. And number one, that there is, you know, the price points for our water does not, is equitable. And looking, looking forward to serving in that capacity. Wanted to share that with my colleagues and also the public. Moving on to city council reports.
I'll just share one.
Okay.
I'll share one. I'm just, I've been a part of, I know last council meeting, we were talking about ethnic studies at Skyline College. I've been part of the committee. Actually, I authored three new courses in ethnic studies at Skyline College and it got approved last week. One is on Asian-Americans, one is on race, class, gender and power, United States. And then a class that I wrote up on Filipina, Filipino, Philippine ex-American community issues. And today, the San Mateo Community College District Academic Senate just passed the major for ethnic studies at all three colleges. So it's been a busy 2021 so far. So I just want to report on that. And one thing, one thing that's beneficial about community colleges is if people want to go ahead and take these courses, you could feel free to enroll in any of the three. And there now will be courses that talk about race, class, gender, sexuality with ethnic studies lens.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor Dr. Dasmagwal, for your work on that. And exciting to hear what you've been able to do at Skyline. And, you know, if anything, it extends to anyone that wants to be able to take those courses at a city college. And that means it is also even more accessible to folks in that regard. So thank you so much for that update and we'll see down the pipeline if we do, are able to bring it to fruition for something for our residents, whether it's workshop or some sort of academy down the line. So, thank you. Well, I wanted to share on city council report is that every week I've been sitting on the San Mateo County Vaccine Communication and Equity Working Group. And that's where they provide updates. Also Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolti also sits in on that. But it's really important and those meetings where we get updates in regards to the county, but also in ways to ensure that our communities, most especially those most vulnerable and also communities of color and immigrant communities have access to information and ways to strategize to ensure that the messaging is out there for our communities and also where and what and what. And so along those lines, today at NEM's Northeastern Medical Services, there was a vaccination site there that was drive-through and right there on Eastmore. And so it's been discussion in making sure that people understand that, you know, it's so important to have the vaccinations. And there have been messaging out there that people don't want to take it. And, you know, and so it's just reassuring the communities that how important it is because it will bring us all to herd immunity and exactly where we want to be to move through this pandemic. And so we'll continue to keep everyone apprised on, in that regard. And then also, I just wanted to also share that on this coming month, we will have our first, like lunar New Year celebration, although virtual, for the city of Daly City. I think it's so important to highlight and have this celebration because we have a high percentage of APIs in our community, but also to, you know, celebrate the New Year and moving forward with continued hope. And please watch out for details of that. We will have our very own, well, they're from Daly City, the Lion Troop, the West Lion Troop. And so they will be performing. There's actually a lion troop that is based in Daly City. So please look out for all, for further details on that. Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to item number eight for city staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff has nothing to report tonight.
Thank you very much. Oh, we do have a report. It was our city manager's birthday.
Oh, no.
Just very recently. So happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you.
We will now move on. Move on to our adjournment. And at this moment, I will yield the floor to my colleague, Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. It's with sadness that I have to report that we had two that has left us and they're actually family members and related to my wife. The first, and you'll notice, they carry the maiden name of my wife by their middle name. The first is Edwin Seriben Manuel. Edwin served the country in the military as a Marine. He was a loving husband to his wife, but life will no longer be the same without him. He had promised to bring Tatay to Las Vegas, but that will not be done anymore. We love him and we will miss him. The second person is my wife's eldest sister, Cleody Seriben Manalo. And a small quote from the family, "She was the first in the family to set foot on American soil. She lived most of her life by her nursing school senior quote and graduating class motto. And that is to live most and serve best." Thank you, Mayor, and I yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. We send our deep condolences to your wife and family. At this time, we are now going to move with Lita Monar. Lita Monar is Joe Monar's mother. And so Lita Monar came to US back in 1968 to finish her medical degree and was sponsored by a family in San Francisco. She frequented many places in San Francisco, Daly City, Bay Area to shop and enjoy. She was a devout Christian Catholic wife, mother and sister. She loved America and her hometown of Sinaitilokasor, Philippines. Also for Irene Vanessa Akampo. And last but not least, Mr. Jonah Miller, who was a community member here in Daly City that will be truly missed. And this is from his wife, Ronnie. from his wife, Ronnie Miller. Jonah was born and raised in New Jersey. He and his wife Ronnie drove across country for their honeymoon in nineteen sixty-two and landed in Southern California. The family was later transferred to Daly City by Jonah's job. The Millers have lived in Daly City for forty-nine years where they built a strong community of friends, including so many special members of the Police Department and the City Council. Jonah passed peacefully on January twenty-third, leaving behind his wife, daughter, son-in-law, grandson and great-grandson. And in this moment, um, as we honor them, may we have a moment of silence.
Uh, Ma- Madam Mayor, can I say something before we do?
Yes, of course.
I just wanted to convey how special, uh, Mr. Miller was, um, you know, he was, I just, e- every time I turned around at the council meeting, he was there and um, he, he listened intently and he would give us that stare sometimes and, um, but you just knew it was a stare of concern and of real, um, just the community spirit that he had, him and his wife. And so, um, I really appreciated, uh, the times that, you know, he would either criticize me or, um, give me a pat on the back, um, because he was just, I, I, I knew it was heartfelt and he was he's very true to what his thoughts were. And so we, I think, are a, a better city because of him. Um, he was a big fan of the Daly City newspaper, I think it was called The Recorder or something like that and he kept bugging me to, to, you know, get that back on, 'cause it was, uh, uh, something he really enjoyed and I'm, I'm sad we were not able to fulfill that wish that he did have, but, um, I, I really admire people like him, um, his wife Ronnie, who showed up every single time uh, in our council meeting, they had their special seats right in the front. And, um, I, I just couldn't let it go without telling the, the community how much we really appreciated that. And, um, he very much will be missed, uh, by so many people uh, in our city, so thank you, Madam Mayor.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a comment as well.
Of course, please.
Uh, thank you, thank you, uh, Mayor, I have to e- echo the sentiments of my you know, uh, there's a quote that tomorrow is promised to no one. And sometimes, eh, you, one must take the time to smell the roses. And believe me, I, uh, again, concur with, uh, Mr. Buena Ventura. He gave me that certain look, if I'd say something, I'd look at him while I was talking to see if I was on the right track. Uh, he did want to become an editor, uh, for Daly City and he bugged me about that as well. But him and Ronnie stood there and they hung in there. And getting back to my previous quote, uh, you are absolutely correct. He loved his community so much, the Police Department, he loved all of staff and knowing me, I don't turn down a meal. And he and Ronnie invited me over to their home, I think you were with me, uh, Mayor, or you, uh, you got there a little bit later, to have a great meal and just talk, showed me his collection. He will be sorely missed, so I, I think that, uh, y- y- you know, it's, it's a awakening call for me and, and that is Carpe Diem, seize the day. So, um, may he rest in peace and thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, may I say a couple words? Yeah, I wanna say that on O C C and with their friends, Al and, and his wife, that many of you may not know about the, uh, the thing about the Holocaust survivor in him and that how his family, his generation, what they suffered. And, um, so on the Remembrance Day, going out to the cemeteries, his, um, profession is being an attorney, a top-notch attorney. He was, uh, never skipped a beat on, uh, anything that he did, he was very detail-oriented, his loving wife. And, uh, they went through a lot together with him and his family and has deep roots, not just in our community, but in, uh, life in general, as survivors. So, um, yes, he will definitely be, um, missed and Ronnie, we do hope that when we co- convene again, that she will be able to join us as well. And, um, our community has benefited from them quite a bit, even when they are invite, remember, they were involved in our American Cancer Society, uh, both of them, and how they were very, um, robust about it, you know, given his wife was a survivor. And then they put in a lot of energy and time and gave so much, so thank you, um, um, Ma- Madam Mayor for allowing me to, uh, to honor him and his wife, thank you very much, and to my colleagues, thank you.
Of course. Um, any other comments, um, from anyone that'd like to speak on, uh, Jonah Miller? Yeah, I, I will say that I, I will never forget that nice dinner that we had, um, Councilmember Sylvester in which they offered their home and really just shared a lot of their, their, um, background and life, like, uh, hearing, you know, usually they're just in, in the front and really just intently listening, but to see them on a more personal level and really, um, exactly what, um, Councilmember Vinaventura uh, mentioned, that they really cared to be always there, um, at our council chambers. And I know that, um, when I did get to speak with Ronnie o- over the phone, she did mention how much she, they both missed and they were just talking about missing being able to come in and be in, in those chambers. Um, and so, I, I know he's watching over, uh, when we're back in the chambers, we're in the Zoom world. Um, but, um, definitely agreed on those after council meetings where takes you to side and I'm like, is he going to say something where, um, it's a critique or is it going to be something, um, good, you know? Sometimes it's, it's a critique, it's a good critique and then at the end, sometimes it's also like, you did a good job, right? And to hear that, um, from one of the elders in our community is, uh, really special and so uh, you will be dearly missed, uh, Jonah Miller, um, may you rest in peace. And, uh, may we not be in a moment of silence. This meeting is now adjourned.